We welcome Dr. Drum's family, his wife and siblings, other relatives.
Sister-in-law and friend.
Very nice. Nice to have you welcomed for a very special meeting, right?
It is.
Thirteen years.
One of a kind.
Yes, yes. So we'll have a little celebration with that in just a little bit. But while we're waiting for Tina, we'll go to the informational items and we'll start with 5.1, the president's report.
Well, I want to thank the board of trustees for maybe not the final time. Who knows, you know, down the road, but certainly for the final time while I am formally in this role as president of the college. I can't thank the board enough for all you've done to support me, some of you for more years than others, right, Margaret? Margaret and Mark, yeah, Margaret, Mark and Jim are the only original board members of the group that hired me. But everyone else, it's been, it's been great working with you. And I'll see it community events in the, in the future and whatnot. And it's a private citizen. That's going to be a unique role for me after almost 50 years to be a private citizen. But I want to, you know, recognize the, the board members who I worked with over the years. It won't take very long. There's not that many. We haven't had that much, haven't had that much turnover. Barbara's relatively new to the board, but she was kind of executive when I, when I came. And I thank her for her support ever since. Appreciate it very much. Mark and Jim aren't here, but Margaret might remember some of the, you know, some of the folks and you'll know some of the, some of the earlier folks. When even though you all remember probably the students, Aseel Mohammed, who was our student trustee for a while. Sharon Ball, who was on the board for, for a few years and then left for, for health reasons. Of course, Nick Seraphini, who after George passed sadly, was our longest-serving trustee. And so he, and he worked, he was a board member for many years without having a formal appointment. He just didn't step down until finally years later, the governor, the governor appointed someone in his seat. Michael Woodward, Orion Barber, both student trustees.
Oh, yeah, Orion.
Yeah. And of course, George Jacob, anchor stalwart supporter from day one. I miss George all the time, as I know many people in the community does, and certainly no one more than Sally. But I miss George a great deal. Ayesha Mortensen, who's now on the foundation board, was a student trustee. I'm Craigian, Tahara Tookill, and she stepped down. Nancy LeVar, a short time until she moved to Florida. Dr. Angelo Strangelo, who, you know, when I was hired. Back to the Capitol district area, where he had a very successful business for many years, and Kim Griffin. Who we all, we all miss. Willie Murray, a student trustee, Sandra Harper. I still get a notice on Facebook from Sandra Harper every now and then. She was awesome. Trustee Bob Mopper, you know, who sadly passed away a couple of years after, after I came. Joyce Majewski, who was on for the first few years that, that I was here. And Zachariah Riley was the student trustee and was actually on the search committee when I was hired. He's now with United Way. Yeah. So I can't thank all of, all the trustees that I've worked with enough for the support. It's been a great honor. And of course, the time to thank faculty and staff on Saturday afternoon, early Saturday evening. But always got a great team around me. Nobody can do any of this alone. The current team is here. I can't thank Penny and Michael and Carol, and then there's Jesse here. Jesse, I can't see, I'm the, I'm the executive team and Kathy, the foundation. Just can't thank you all enough. And so many more. We wouldn't be here all night if I, if I started naming everybody. And of course, I couldn't have done this without the support of Bonnie and my son. And putting up with me all these, all these years, 20 years, almost 20 years as a president between the two, between the two jobs. And I am, I am thrilled, you know, with the choice. We had five really good finalists, four who interviewed, any one of them would have made a great president. And the board I know had a really tough place in the other 20, 20, great job. And, and I'm going to end on the note I did with financing facilities. Enrollment is up. That's the first time we've been able to say that. We continue hovering right around 4% and it has been hovering, which is a good sign. And just wait until the Binghamton event is registered next month. It's going to spike. So it's, it's a great way to, yeah, great way to go out. I can't thank everybody enough, but there'll be more, more thank yous on, on Saturday. That concludes my report for this evening.
Sure. Well, thank you very much. It was a great way to end it with that move. So that is awesome. All right. Well, we have Tina, so we can go back up. The board received minutes from the May 25th, 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Margaret. Second, second, Barbara, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? All right, move on to 2.1, my vice chair, Barbara. Yes, a, a, a meeting was held. All action items were approved endlessly. And concludes my report. All right. So you have the preferred agenda action items under section three. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Thank you, Jim. Second. Second. Thank you, Tina. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? All right. Well, this comes to a very special part of the meeting. Kevin, your 13 years, there's a lot of thanks for all the, your passion and your love for the college and, and for the community and seen by everyone. It's hard to go to a meeting anywhere in the community that Kevin isn't part of, right? So you've, you've really given all that anyone can possibly give to this college. And we're very thankful for that. So we have two resolutions to share this evening. The first one, so everybody can hear, can everybody hear? Okay. The first one is to recommend approval of the resolution granting emeritus status. Is there a motion to approve? Margaret, second. Thank you. Jason, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Got to make sure. Congratulations. Okay. All right. Thank you for approval. The Board of Trustees of SUNY Broom Community College, Binghamton, New York, takes this opportunity to congratulate Dr. Kevin E. Drum upon achieving the status of President Emeritus of the college and to thank him for his many years of service on this 22nd day of June, 2023. Congratulations. Not quite done. All right. 4.2, recommend approval of the resolution appointing President of SUNY Broom Community College. Jim, thank you. Second. Also, thank you, Barbara. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? All right. Whereas Dr. Kevin E. Drum was appointed President of SUNY Broom Community College on February 1st, 2010, and devoted the following 13 and a half years to advancing SUNY Broom Community College through academic, physical, and cultural milestones. And whereas Dr. Kevin E. Drum guided the college to a official name change and rebrand from Broom Community College to SUNY Broom. And whereas Dr. Kevin E. Drum orchestrated the transition to a residential campus for the development of the student village. And whereas Dr. Kevin E. Drum oversaw the allocation of over $100 million in funding via grants, generous donor gifts, and government support toward a campus beautification campaign. And whereas Dr. President Drum initiated on average about one major renovation project per year, including upgrading and modernizing learning spaces within SUNY Broom's infrastructure and the transformation of the historic downtown SUNY Broom Culinary and Event Center. And whereas Dr. Kevin E. Drum built and strengthened partnerships with the region's school districts by significantly expanding the Fast Forward Program, as well as with our sister SUNY institution, Binghamton University, through the BAP and B2B programs. And whereas Dr. Kevin E. Drum navigated the college through the global COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Dr. Kevin E. Drum ushered SUNY Broom through the college's 75th anniversary, anniversary, excuse me. And whereas during, 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 Kevin, going too fast. Whereas during Dr. Kevin E. Drum's 13 and a half years of distinguished service to the college, all areas of the campus community benefited from his unending devotion to the well-being and collegiality amongst its employees. And whereas Dr. Kevin E. Drum has always held student success and academic achievement foremost in his heart. And be it therefore resolved that in the light of such service, scholarship, and accomplishment, the SUNY Broom Community College's Board of Trustees duly acknowledge him and be it further resolved that Dr. Kevin E. Drum be granted the status of President Emeritus of SUNY Broom Community College with all of his privileges. I hereby certify that the following is true and correct. Catherine Conation, Chairperson, SUNY Broom Board of Trustees.
Thank you very much.
Little gift.
Still not done?
We may, you don't know for any reason.
We may need to.
We have a cake.
It's a packaging paper. It's meant not to be easily.
Well, I was worried. It was supposed to come yesterday. Okay, we'll get this up. Margaret.
Well, I may need more.
It's still.
Yeah, right here. Oh, wow. Man, this is.
Yeah. Wow.
We could ship this around the world. Really good route. It's in there tight. Oh, wow. Some of you have seen this, some of you haven't. Look, my final commencement walk after the recent commencement last month. Chair Conation was happy to be walking behind me and saw the moment and grabbed it. Had the presence of mind to grab that. Thank you for watching.
It was really something.
It was.
It was, I looked up as I was walking up and I thought, oh, my gosh, I got to take that picture.
Well, obviously, once in a lifetime, and the only, the only person in the world who could have had that perspective.
Yeah.
And you'll see another very unique photo on Saturday, on Saturday night, a very unique one, like, like this, only one of a kind and could only be one of a kind. Thank you so much. That's great.
It's worked out.
It did.
Yeah. All right. We'll move on next to section 5.2, Dr. Penny Kelly.
So I am actually deferring to Danielle Britton, who is going to give us an update on Hornets for All.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. So I just wanted, I'm glad to give a quick update on, you know, Dr. Kelly presented a couple of meetings ago about Hornets for All. So we wanted to give an update on where it's going. I'm really excited about kind of streamlining and grouping together some of the initiatives we're doing. I mean, we're all aware, we have so many great programs and a lot of people in the community don't know the programs and the facilities we have. So looking at ways that we can highlight what we have here. So we've grouped them kind of by grade level with, and we're going to work on some of the branding with, with Jesse on Hornet Explorers for the younger grades, focusing on the Hornet Academy for middle school and then different Hornet Institutes for high school students. So we've done our, traditionally had our College for Kids program. So we came up with this idea a little bit late to rebrand our College for Kids. So we're going College for Kids this summer. We haven't run it since before COVID. So, and almost all of the people in my office are new and haven't done College for Kids before. So we restructured it a little bit and we're running two programs, Lego and Sensational Science for seven through nine and 10 through 13-year-olds. So that's actually happening next week. There's a gap in summer programs the first we got from school, so we thought we'd try to fill that gap and then hopefully build some momentum as we start to bring that back and restructure a little bit to kind of better highlight our programs. Because in the past, our College for Kids has been really standalone and it's been on our campus, but not really tied to different initiatives. So it'll be good to tie that in. And then for the second year, we're also running our Junior Chef at the Culinary and Event Center. Last year it filled, this year it filled again, both times with a waitlist. So really excited to run that for a little bit older group this year than we did last year. And they'll be doing all sorts of different fun activities at the Culinary and Event Center.
Is there a way to do that more frequently, since you have a waiting list? Sounds like there's so much interest, you know?
Yeah, I, I think that as we get more staff, yeah. I think it's, it's as we get more instructors to help support it, we'd be able to, yeah. Yeah. And that's, we, we've been kind of brainstorming how we can get some more instructors and to do some different programs. Because, I mean, to go off this a little bit, our, our programs that we've been doing there through continuing ed have done really well. I actually took one with Bonnie. I've taken a couple, but they, they're doing really well. But we definitely need to bring out some more instructors to grow those two. Also this summer, we're launching two new pilot programs that are under the Hornet Institute. The first is Battery Science and Manufacturing, which is through the New Energy New York Project. It's partially supported through that. It'll be running two weeks at the end of July for 11th and 12th graders. We'll be focusing on chemistry and engineering and how that's related to battery science and manufacturing. We're also setting up different tours of local companies like VAE, Imperium III, and then bringing in a variety of guest speakers, as well as pulling in some career exploration for the participants. And then the other one we're doing is for healthcare careers. And I should say, all of the instructors for both of these are all our faculty and using our facilities on, on our campus. So all of our health science programs are participating in the healthcare careers one. They're doing either an hour and a half or three-hour hands-on activity with the participants. That'll be one week. And then we're also setting up tours of our healthcare facilities and bringing in some guest speakers. And I forgot to put on there, we also have a program from our paramedic program as well. They'll be doing an activity. So we're keeping these smaller this year and we're partnering with OCSEs to get the word out. And then we're hoping to grow them. So that's what we're piloting this year. And then look at in the future how we can scale them up. But the one I really wanted to focus on, because I'm the most excited about it, is the Hornet Academy, which we're going to pilot with two school districts, Windsor and Maine-Undwell this fall. And the focus is for middle school students that are going to be selected by the districts that are kind of, we're going to figure out how to target students that are kind of in the middle of the road and take away some of the barriers like transportation so they can get here. So we're supposed to be helping support that piece of it and to explore the in-demand careers and programs that we have here on campus and tie them into some of the career exploration activities that are happening in the school districts as well. So we'll be doing this Saturdays twice a month from about nine to noon. And have had, again, this is all faculty there, have really had good response. Still confirming it, but right now in our draft, we have 32 different activities spread over all that time. So students will sign up for a series of four sessions, hitting all of our divisions. And then they can sign up for one series or they can sign up for multiple. So we're working with the districts on how to best do that. And again, it'll be really hands-on activities and tying in the careers that we have in the community. So each session will start with kind of like a welcome and how is this going to relate to what job opportunities there are in the community? And I'm, I'm really excited to get this one going and to have the support of Windsor to try it out and Maine-Undwell is excited to try it out. So I think middle school is a really critical year for students to learn about what there is in different careers so that they can pick the right things going into high school. We also have been talking about really elementary is also really important. So then how do we go down from there too? But this will be a good start with the middle school and then it ties in with what we're doing with Spark and then a couple of different evening events for families, because that's the other piece to this. We're going to, we've been brainstorming how we can pull the families into this because they're also the ones helping students make decisions on their, their future careers.
I think that's great. You, you led right into it. My question was going to be, you know, the parents or, you know, other support people in the kid's life. Can we help some?
Yeah. So we, so we plan to end the whole series with some sort of celebration here on campus and invite the families. But we also brainstorming how we can in between do something to also bring them in and up to speed. Like if the students do some sort of presentation that their families are invited to, something like that. Because that's the other, that's the other kind of clinch put in there.
And I think the hope is that perhaps some of that exposure will lead some of their families to enroll in programs as well. So not just to guide their kids, but that they see something upcoming as well.
It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Dr. Kelly's in.
Well, see, that concludes our report. Thank you.
We'll go on to SUNY Assembly, okay, Alejandro. Alejandro at Emory University.
Yeah, so I've been at Emory University since the beginning of this month doing research in the biochemistry lab. The SUNY Assembly hasn't met yet. So I don't really have anything to report, or then we're all just still very excited to start the year. And to start with, you know, new, new students and continuing students that were all really passionate about SUNY Broom. And our VP of Administrative Affairs did want to mention that she's currently in the decision-making about the student union. So there is a voice there regarding like the, I think the proposals, the proposals. So that's really nice to, to hear.
Great. Well, we welcome you to the board, Alejandro.
Thank you, guys.
All right. We will go on then to the foundation report. Kathy Williams.
Hi. As of April 23rd, the foundation's total investment portfolio was $40.5 million, to which 39.5 million is in debt. The foundation's total assets were $45.6 million to the beneficial. The foundation's total assets were forty-five-point-six million dollars to the beneficial interest and perpetual trust. Here at the fiscal year-end of June thirty, twenty-twenty-two, only a total asset of forty-three-point-one million. The foundation had a net surplus through the year, year-to-date through April of three-point-eight million dollars for the fiscal year. Contributing to this was a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar state gift and realized and unrealized gains of approximately two-point-eight million dollars. We are actively wrapping up the last week of our fiscal year and our fundraising. Um, I did want to thank the trustees towards achieving a hundred percent participation with their giving, because it's very important for us. When we go to our funders, foundation funders, and they ask if our governing boards. Participate and make annual contributions, and we're proud to say that they do, um, each year. So thank you all for your belief and continued support. Um, we did recently receive two estate gifts that I had talked to you about previously. One for approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand dollars, which will support need-based grants and aid for older women. Um, well, not older women, I'm sorry, women over the age of thirty-five.
That's older?
Turn young to men. Um, but, uh, uh, that was, um. Something that, um, one of our, um. Alumni who went to college when she was over the age of thirty-five. And she had a whole new career and a whole new life, and unfortunately she passed away. But she did end up giving us the entire remainder of the estate, so we're very fortunate that she felt strongly about her experience at Broom. Uh, the other one is a forty-one-thousand-dollar gift from a local community friend who wanted to support nursing students. So that's a either need-based grants and aid or merit scholarships, but saw the value to invest in nursing, so we're very excited about that. Um, I did want to mention that today we've had a very wonderful ceremony. Where we displayed the contents of the time capsule out front and saw many of you there today. Um, but it's really an exciting day for us, because as we wrap up the seventy-fifth anniversary celebration, uh, this year. We collected a lot of memorabilia and room-related items for the time capsule. Over a hundred items will be go to. Um, all three local news stations were here and covered it, we got excellent coverage, and we had a lot of representation. Um, this is just an example of a publication that our team put together on the contents of what the, um. Time capsule will be, and we're very proud to say that this is the digital book that's online, there's a QR code. We're going to be advertising it, you'll be able to download it, and there's a description of all the different items, the things that we have. In the time capsule, that it really was, um, a, a. Huge effort by a whole committee of people that, uh, we couldn't have done without you. And so we'll be burying that time capsule, once we get everything packed up and sealed and done appropriately. And with a chance, go out and look in front whales, we have a new holder with a beautiful plaque which identifies where it's going to be. And in fifty years. Maybe someone here will be there to open it up when they opened it up in fifty years. So, uh, anyways, that was just a really wonderful thing, we shouldn't have done it without our alumni, our faculty, staff, our retirees, and our on-campus.
Thank you. All right, I think we have facilities, Davey's that year, is someone else giving his updates? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, he is not, they have to leave early, so I'll do the other thing. Um, as you recall, we bid the Florida project a month ago, and we only had one bidder. So we, we bid the project and the bids were opened on the nineteenth of June, this time with three late bits. So the bid paid off and we saved about one-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. Construction contracts have been finalized for all contracts for the old signs and student services building restroom projects. While taking down the walls and ceilings, we found some additional asbestos and we are awaiting, uh, a waiting process. We received ten proposals from the architects for the old signs to the student unit conversion project. Uh, our selection committee will review proposals over the next few weeks and interviews with the architects to follow. Bitch for the HVAC replacement at the student center restroom opened on May eleventh and approved by the board at the May twenty-fifth meeting. Notices of intent to award have been sent to the contractors and their construction contract development to follow. Uh, the electric business repair work or the damage incurred during the Thanksgiving Day power outage was successfully completed on, uh, Saturday, the May twenty-seventh. Um, we also did the inspections on the transformers and switches on, uh, during this, during that power shutdown. Unfortunately, we had, uh, another power outage over the last weekend, uh, our main transformer took a hit. Um, we have a five-year warranty on that transformer and we have a communications with the manufacturers to process the warranty. Preliminary designs for the decorning renovation project are nearing completion. We had our meeting with the architect and construction manager today morning to review the cost estimates, um. The design development is progressing very well for the project, um. We had our initial meeting with the architect and the college's steering committee to begin discussions of converting the wheels building to a one-star student admissions and enrollment center. Um, the architect had a four meeting with the foundation to identify their needs, and that project is in the pre-design phase. An architectural design contract had been finalized for the replacement of tech or HVAC system. This is mainly to upgrade the ceiling and the cooling tower, um, apart from the nursing renovation, um, design work will begin shortly. In fact, the design engineer will be on-site on Monday, the twenty-sixth, for an initial evaluation. We are awaiting a cross-proposal from logic, logical buildings, uh, for the utility sub米trium project. Which will enter all of our on-campus buildings for electric water and gas. Uh, we are working with IK Systems and they will be providing a cross-proposal for the campus-wide security camera project. Also, uh, we are finalizing a purchase order, uh, for campus-wide door lock project. And with those two projects. We should, we will be able to enhance the safety across campus. Also, we are awaiting, uh, for the architectural descent contracts to be finalized for the following projects. So that work will begin on those, um. As you can see, the list is low. And with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we will move on to five point six, Michael Sullivan.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, I'd just like to, uh, commend, uh, Livin', who's, uh, number two in the facilities. Arena, which we have a tremendous amount of work that I mentioned last month, and I'd just like to. Acknowledge him. He's a, he will probably succeed Dave. Uh, as the facilities director, at least if I have anything to say about it, and, uh. So, uh, so be it. So, uh. I'd like to make. A couple of, uh, brief comments on behalf of administration. At Dr. Drum's last, uh, board meeting. On behalf of, uh, administration, we'd like to thank you for selecting us to serve on your behalf. Uh, and the board, and, uh. Uh, I would, uh, I'll make more comments on Saturday. But I would like to, uh, acknowledge publicly that, uh, Dr. Drum has been, um. A very dedicated public servant who has, um. Been very committed to the, the mission and purpose of the college. His heart has always been there, he hasn't micromanaged the administration, and we thank you for that. And, uh, on behalf of his family here today and all of, uh, the team today. We'd just like to thank you for all of your efforts over your entire thirteen-plus years. Uh, here at the college.
Thank you, Mike. Jesse and everybody, thank you.
So, uh, with that, I'll be very brief, uh, um. Budget forecast for this month has been the same as it's been for the last several months. And, uh, we're still projecting about three-point-eight million of federal stimulus funds. Um. Uh, we appreciate the board's support of the budget for next year. Uh, operating budget twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. And, uh, all of the rest of the items, uh, are informational. And I'd be happy to respond to any questions that any board member may have.
Questions, Michael. Great, thank you, Michael, very much. Um, then we will move on to five point seven, Jesse.
Standard of course, this one.
Thank you very much.
I couldn't stop it.
Yeah. All right, uh. Do any of the board of trustees, you don't want executives? I know. Cake is here. Let's eat cake, so, uh, before we finish, just to, you know, just to stick, I mean, it's, uh, it's very sweet. That's exciting, might be your life, but obviously emotional for this to be the, the last meeting, um, and we echo Michael's comments. Think, um, you leave behind an amazing legacy with your fingerprints all over the community college. I think you put a great footprint, able to go out on a four percent increase in enrollment, and more to come in the next month. So that's just amazing, when you think about what's happening in the province, the state, and the country, so congratulations and thank you. And we wish you and Bonnie and your family all the best, um, in the next stage of your life, whatever trouble you might get into.
Are you funny or not?
I think his history has stories, I'm not sure. Anyway, is there a motion to adjourn? We have some cake and everyone is invited, obviously, to stay and enjoy.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Okay.
Thank you, Margaret, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? All right, let's have cake.